Up to the efficiency status.
And I'm opening the Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the OKAM Board of Selectmen. We pledge the Stanford Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, together, indivisible, liberty, justice, so.
Do we have a motion to approve warrants, payroll, and payables?
I make a motion to for warrant WR twenty-five dash zero eight payables and warrant PR twenty-five dash zero seven payroll.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes?
And no minutes approved, right? Okay, next up is public session. Is there anybody here for public session?
Barbara Roschinsky, Northbrook Field Road. Can someone answer why this we don't have our sixty-one A form yet for the taxes?
Sixty-one A comes from the Board of Assessors. And I I got two calls.
They're out well before now and they have to be filed. I can't remember the date. They have to be filed.
Very soon.
We haven't received one yet at all, and I don't think we're the only ones.
You're not. I got two calls on it last night. I was going to bring it up today, too. But I suggested that the people that called me last night talk speak with the assessor on Thursday, because that is the day that she works.
Thank you. See, I already know.
Mm-hmm. Let me go.
I'm gonna check. Diane might be in here now.
It's just we don't want to be late, but if we don't get it.
Exactly.
There's one other person.
This is for chapter sixty-one, verse.
John Diamond East Hill. I've got just a couple of issues that I'd like the town to look into. And one of them is this catch basin out front here. Who put up the catch basin below grade? That when you have to pull over because there's traffic coming down and there's parking on the library side. That you go into this hole. That needs to be addressed because it I don't know if I damaged my car or not, but I had to replace a wheelbarrow. So this needs to be addressed out here because it poses a danger to people driving up and down the road.
That's the one on Maple Street?
No, that's the one right out front.
Right in front of the the sign?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, second. I under I'm under the impression that the traffic pattern down here on Rutland Road in Ware Corner is going to be changed. Because the line goes to Ware Corner, from Ware Corner over the Rutland Road, traffic coming down the hill. Nobody uses their blinker. They just think it's part of Ware Corner or Rutland Road. And there's been a couple of instances where there's been a few close calls here. So I'd like that situation addressed as soon as possible.
So have we heard back from Fred?
No, we haven't.
About the signage?
No.
Alright, so I'll follow up with that tomorrow.
Alright.
Find out why.
We're working on it.
Okay.
No.
I mean, before there's an incident. Another one, there's two holes up on Beech and Road that have been dug by some incompetent moron. They're about three feet deep. And they could fall into the trenching mass general law, an open trench. Two people have been pulled out of one of them in the winter from plowing. There's only a matter of time before somebody comes down and goes the one of the holes is right off the pavement. Somebody could go into that hole, grab the bed, get killed or seriously injured.
That's the cross culverts?
Yep.
Going under the road?
Yep. It was never a structure put in. It was just a big hole dug. So you've been put on notice and if anything happens.
What part of Beech?
Uh, just above the Beech and House residence.
Okay.
And probably about three hundred feet or so up the road is a second one. I think it's.
So between Richards and Beechens?
Yes, there's two of them there on the north side of the road.
Okay.
And that's only on that that one side?
Yep.
Or is it on both sides?
It's on one side. I don't know if the the culvert have ever been checked. Those are all culverts. If they have to be replaced, the road's gonna get dug up. So there's no structure there or anything, no markers, no safety whatsoever.
Okay. All right, we'll let Highway know about that.
Okay. Speaking of the highway, are we using the ex-highway guy for something?
No.
Why is he spending so much time with the the barn? Should put a stop to that because that's a liability. That's loitering. If he gets injured, you'd be on the hook.
I don't realize he was up there. Okay. Andy Elström.
Thank you for looking into that.
Okay, alright, we'll be back with you.
And if we can just circle back quickly to sixty-one A. She said that they were sent out. They they're receiving them, but here's the form. It's so if you hear anyone else send them that way. You got, okay, we'll grab them from her. Um, she has a folder with the ones that she's received back, so I'm not really sure.
I've been missing so many. I don't know. I I do know, however, the post office is having difficulty at times, and some things are not being received, and some things that need to be coming back are not coming back.
Uh, we just keep it on the calendar as a reminder and the best thing to do.
Yeah, it's the best thing to do.
State election warrant for November fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion that we sign and post the election warrant for the fifth day of November, twenty twenty-four. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town who are qualified to vote in elections to vote at the OKAM Town Hall on Tuesday, the fifth day of November, twenty twenty-four, from seven AM to eight PM. And for the following purposes, and it is presidential elections, senate elections, state elections, et cetera. And ballot questions. And I'm not going to read through them because they're involved, but.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is tomorrow.
Next up, Northbrook Real Town Administrator regarding the senior center regionalization discussion. Mike.
Thank you.
Mike, we can bring two more chairs up here if you if you'd like them.
I'm the senior senate director and also our council on aging chair.
Okay.
Worked a little bit. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, that's okay. I got it.
Makes no makes a lot of noise.
No worries.
That side. Are you good there?
Thank you for your chair. Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you for reaching out to us.
Well, actually, you reach out to us first, this gentleman here.
Yes, he was tasked by our council on aging to seek out if people would our other COAs would be interested in merging.
Absolutely. He came to my office and and we discussed it. Uh, I talked to Courtney. Uh, she's our CLA director, and she feels that we have a large enough center and enough capacity to take more people in, and certainly we would like to on both sides reap the benefits of of the economies of scale. We're both doing the same thing, and and if we do it together, we can have more programs and and perhaps better services for our seniors. Have this sheet of paper? Did we we bring copies for them?
I can make copies.
Okay. Right and back.
Okay.
Has has a background on our our building. It's a four thousand square foot building, a little larger, accessible, and some of the some of the activities we have. And potentially, if there's interest, we could add more activities, perhaps more hours if we combine our resources.
How many days are you open now?
Monday through Thursday from nine to two.
Nine to two.
Yep.
And the senior senator is still off the the Common Playground?
It is on Forest Street.
Forest Street.
Yep.
Yes, it's a former market.
Yep, the former projects, yep.
They've just put a new roof on the building, so it's in pretty good shape. Uh, we're working on the kitchen, improving that. So we've we've got congregant meals twice a week, Monday and Wednesday.
Yep.
So.
How many people do you serve?
Uh, roughly maximum we try to see on Wednesdays is twenty-five, but for our special meals, we've done up to sixteen. Yeah.
Who does the special meals?
The volunteers. I have about six to eight volunteers that work very hard to put on the meals. Um, so beginning in December, we're bringing in Tri Valley to do meals on Monday, but we've been doing the weekly meals. I, as long as I've been there, I was, I started back in twenty twenty-two as the program and outreach assistant, and I recently became director in May. So um, I have, so it's myself, and I have a program and outreach coordinator as well, and then we have a janitor. We had a receptionist up until April of this year. Unfortunately, she retired and then she passed away recently, so.
Um, sorry, do you have that? The meals that the volunteers make, are they based on any specific nutritional needs?
We try to keep them nutritional, yes. Um, we include your vegetables, your proteins. We try to balance everything out. Um, they like to center on, so I the cooks have the ability to choose what they want to make most of the time. Um, sometimes budget-wise, if things go a little bit over, because we have a set budget. Our food is funded by our friends group. So we have, we have a very active friends group. They do at least two big fundraisers for us a year, and they have two accounts. So they have our general account, which is what we use to purchase anything from. They had to replace the TV recently. They paid for that. They also replaced our refrigerator last year. Um, and then they also have our food account, and that covers all our lunches, all our special meals. Um, so yeah, yep. We're able to do that with through their help.
I know in some senior places, they have chefs and other senior places, they do allow people who are their friends or their members cook the meals, and they're not nutritional. There's a lot of macaroni and cheese and things like that, which of course is not, it has to be balanced.
Right, yep, yep. We do a lot of so when we do meals, we um, we'll do salads a lot of times with the meal. We'll do every once in a while we'll have, we'll add milk. It's hard to do the milk all the time because not everybody drinks milk.
You know, I know.
We're teary restrictions, but um, yeah, we try to balance things out.
Okay.
One of our biggest meals actually is our Thanksgiving meal. We do it for free.
Mm-hmm.
We have, last year, we had forty patrons come in for it, and we just, we go all out. We have a little bit of everything. Might be a little high carb, but that's usually the only one.
Of course.
During the year, that's the high carb. And then for Christmas, the past two years, we've catered our Christmas meal.
Who catered?
Um, last year, we used a it was Common Brown in Northbrook Field. They provided the meal, and the year before, we actually went to a place out in Stirbridge.
It was Hearthstone.
That's it, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was very good. Yeah. And again, the friends helped pay for that as well, so.
So they have very good fundraisers if they can
They do.
Do all of these.
Yes.
Okay.
Can the council on aging ask some questions, too?
Not right now. This is, this was set up for as as the agenda says, this is a meeting for the Board of Selectmen and the town of Northbrook Field.
I'm just thinking that some of the questions might help elucidate some of the that you might want to talk about.
Well, they may still get to them.
Um, on the second page, you have health and activities?
Yes, yes.
Um, so I I see the four things that you have. What else do you do for like health and wellness, say screening programs besides blood pressure and what else do you do?
We're working on trying to get those programs back, so we had two major things. The first was the director at the time Diane Nichols passed away back in twenty twenty, and then COVID happened. So after that, there was a lot of change going on. So I'm actually trying to work on getting some of the regular screenings that she had going um, back into the programming.
So what did she have at the time?
She used to do, she did, I believe it's Life, is it Lifeline? She had the, they would do, it's a body scan. She would have them come in. Um, she did a lot of outreach where she had, um, I think she had like a lot of speakers coming in to talk about different things they did. She did fall prevention programming. She did. I found some material on um, memory cafe. So I've been going through all her records and trying to find the list of.
So that she had like a mental health screening and
Yep.
Um, other things.
Yes, yeah.
Down.
Yep, yes.
Whether it was cardio, you know, or
Yep.
Just general.
Then we had air hearing aid clinic.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
We have clinic, of course, we have the clinic once a month.
Yep.
Yep.
You have the diatribe.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, it's just always been.
She's still working out at the kitchen?
Is who?
The podiatrist.
Well, she, it is a little room off of the kitchen, not the kitchen proper, but it's a room where we have a hand washing sink and we have some uh, cupboards where we store things, but.
One of the things I am looking at is moving, um, but we have when you walk into the building, there's like an area that's kind of like it's kind of petitioned off.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just actually was talking about getting higher petitions possibly and to make it so that it's more cordoned off and to have more activities in there. Um, one of the challenges is the layout of the building itself. It's very, it's an open floor plan. So trying to get too many, it's getting activities going at the same time. It's a little bit challenging. We did try to have a music program in there, and it did not work out because the petition, they're just not high enough right now. So I'm, I am looking into making that more permanent and trying to without.
Familiar, I've been inside.
Yeah, yeah, without doing construction and building a whole wall, but getting a little bit more privacy in there.
And parking's adequate for most days.
Yes.
Okay.
Unlike most things in Northbrook Field, it has it has a dedicated parking lot, which makes it quite easy to
Right.
Park downtown is not so easy.
That'll be all nicely paved in a few years, right?
Yeah, working on it. We're starting a sidewalk project uh, with the next couple of weeks on uh, Main Street. It's going to be uh, continue up in the spring by School Street up to past Vibram. And that's phase one of, well, a number of phases. I don't know what the number is going to be yet.
North Street was done a couple of years ago, and that looks really nice.
Yeah, really trying.
With the granite curbing.
I don't think it's actually granite. I think it's cast and placed concrete because
Is that what it is?
You think granite was too much money.
Looks like granite.
Yeah, it's meant to, but.
It looks nice.
But it wasn't like granite in seventy years.
No.
How many members do you usually have for activities?
We vary between active members across all of activities. We're about the same. We have, I would say at the most thirty. It varies, it definitely varies during the year. I would say.
Is that on a given day or?
On a given day, we have about twenty-five. Um, so our biggest draw generally for the public is our food distribution that we do on Tuesday.
Good.
We have up to twenty-five, a couple of weeks, we had thirty people coming in. Um, over the summer, I was able to add fresh produce to it, so that's been a big draw. We're actually starting to wind down the growing season, so that was a big it was a big draw. I was, we were lucky to be able to partner with the local farm that decided to just we've gotten like, I think, four hundred dollars worth of produce for free to be able to distribute to the seniors to go along with the food that we get from Hannahford as well.
I don't know if you know the answer, but do you have folks coming in, say, from OKAM, Westbrook Field, Lees Brookfield, from other towns to participate?
Yep, so we have been allowing over the past few years, we've been allowing Brookfield to join us as well, only because they themselves do not have a building. They don't have a senior center. They meet in the church basement over there, so we allow them to come over and partake in our programming as well. Um, we've had seniors come from Westbrook Field for our wellness or Tai Chi and yoga. Um, we have a few people that come from Spencer for our foot clinic only because they've noted that it's harder to get in with other places. Their lists are long.
They're very long.
Yeah, yep. So, and we have like her, it's thirty dollars for someone to come in, so we fill up really quick with that one as well, so.
Yeah, sure.
Repeat that again a little while. Sorry, I didn't hear what you said about the foot clinic.
Yeah, so we have, we have a few people that come from Spencer that partake in that um, in different towns. Um, what we do with them is they they pay the full price. Our seniors, so if it would be OKAM and Northbrook Field, they would pay like a portion of that, and then the friends or I'm looking for a grant. Actually, actually, I just got a grant to help cover the other part of that to offset it, so.
Yes, we've been using the formula grant to offset the podiatry for the OKAM people.
Okay.
Just so that you know that far there. Yeah, okay, good.
What would the uh, the impact of OKAM joining Northbrook Field due to your daily operations? Would it be a major impact?
Not at all.
Uh, a manageable impact?
I think the, so and looking at the numbers and everything, I think it's going to have very little impact on our day-to-day operations. I think the only it might be extending some hours just to fit all the activities into the day might be the only thing that I could come up with that would be a problem. Um, our seniors are very welcoming. They they heard about what was going on, and a lot of them have gotten kind of excited to see some new faces coming in. Um, we have we had, it's it's, I've, I've been there for two years. I feel like it's a very warm and welcoming environment and that they're, we're willing to accommodate whatever. I know they, there's different activities here.
Mm-hmm.
We can definitely, we're willing to accommodate and welcome anybody else in.
I think certainly, uh, I don't know if anything that's not listed on here you're currently doing, but I think that's an opportunity to to start new programs and have them more active because you're going to have a larger critical mass of seniors participating. So there'll be more opportunities for affinity groups. And I think if we truly regionalize, I think there'll be more opportunities for grants. The state has been pushing regionalization, and I think when you apply for a grant as a as a regional entity, you're looked at somewhat more favorably, and I think that would help both towns.
Do you have any questions on? Us Lucy or we?
I'm I'm getting.
Okay, perfect. I'll let you ask.
Our, you know, one of our main focuses, of course, is the financial impact.
Yes.
What you would be expecting, what a contract would look like.
Uh, I would assume that we would combine our formula grants and uh, we would have to look at the operational costs and and probably split them either on a proportional basis based on population or based on senior population. And I don't know if that would be that different. Um, right now, uh, you said the beyond the formula grant, your your uh, budget is with sixty-four thousand. I don't know if we, there would be economies, so it wouldn't, you know, that uh, split in some way would be adequate in addition to the formula grants or maybe a little more than that, but uh, certainly it would be uh, more economical to taxpayers as a whole. Uh, it's always easier to run and cheaper to run one facility rather than two. Uh, and certainly we can provide, I think, how many hours are you open now?
I think we're on the same schedule as they are.
Okay.
Monday through Thursday.
And I'd also, and I don't know if it'll be available, uh, I'd look, I know there are grants out there for transportation. To have a a van, uh, would probably have to be stopped by volunteers, but um, we've, I've done that in other communities. We're not that far away. I measured
Seven miles.
Oh. From the parking lot at Vibram to here was six point seven.
Okay, that was close.
Very close.
Sorry, I didn't hear again. I must be getting really hard of hearing.
I was talking about distance.
Oh, distance, okay.
I was.
You were talking about transportation.
Well, I think that, you know, what wants to get a massive people in where we're regionalized, it makes it a lot easier to get grants for transportation services. Uh, and keep that as a word.
Okay, I'm, just to clarify, your amount of your formula grant is?
Seventeen, roughly seventeen thousand dollars. That's what it was last year.
Okay, and then the rest of the money to set the sixty-four thousand, then is the extra for your staff?
Yes, yes. Yeah.
But unless we add significant hours, I think the staff is going to be adequate.
Okay. The one thing also we're trying to be very careful with with anything that we do with our seniors is our lunch program. We're with elder services.
Mm-hmm.
And we are planning on keeping elder services for our seniors.
Okay.
So they would not be participating in your lunch program.
Okay.
Unless something comes up that we're not able to do that.
How how many days a week do you do lunch?
Lunch is four days a week, Monday through Thursday.
No. No.
Well, no, they come to our senior center. They can eat.
They can, yeah, I know. They can.
But if they need something like meals on wheels, then they have to go to Worcester because we have Tri Valley.
You do have Tri Valley.
Yeah, we work with Tri Valley.
Right. No, that I do realize.
And we checked with Tri Valley and they said they could not service somebody who lived in Ocam. They could not provide services.
Right. We're out of your district. Like make an observation. I'm sorry, but we seem to have two distinct populations. One that go to Congregate Meals and others that participate in other activities. So. It's a pretty good split. So you wouldn't have to worry about that. Okay.
So Lucy also on our, our meals, we're covering Hardwick.
Hardwick comes to our senior center to have their meals on wheels prepared. And then she goes to Hardwick. They merged with Barry. And they did not take their seniors meals on wheels program. So. We prepare that for them. And then their driver comes, picks it up from us. And delivers them. They have quite a few. They had last week, they had thirty-two on their lists. So they had quite a sizable list for their town. Right now.
Part of the dynamic with keeping that part of in Ocam. Because if we just cut it loose, then. You know, what is.
We're going to impact.
Out of here.
Right. Hardwick, if we don't keep doing this, we would impact them. And they are. Elder services. They're not Tri Valley. So it would work out better that. For them to stay with us anyway.
I agree. Yes, yes, definitely. I did. I did a little bit of research. I did talk with. MCOA, Massachusetts Council on Aging, to see if they've ever had. Anybody like with the merging of different ASAP areas. Then they did tell me that it would end up being, I work with. Two separate agencies. So I'd have to work with Tri Valley for North Brookfield and then. Elder Services for Ocam. So.
Yeah, interesting. Yeah. Okay. All right. That's good.
You're okay doing that?
Yeah, yep. They're pretty much, both agencies are pretty much the same. So it's just the area.
It's same food, but different area.
Yeah.
But whatever we get from them for lunch, they get the same lunches.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like it or not.
Yeah.
They do get the same, except for the days then that you have that option. Of coming on the days where your volunteers do make the lunches, which is very nice. Volunteers that you have to do that. Very nice. Okay.
Lucy, would, we want to ask North Brookfield for a monetary estimate?
That's what I was in the process of doing.
I'm sorry. You sounded like you were going to wrap it up.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure, you know, what else you would expect from us if we merged. I don't want to be hit with any surprises.
Fair enough. We need to sit down and, and get a formal.
I would, I would need to see something formal, maybe from your finance committee even.
I can do that. I'm having a little bit of trouble right now, but it's short term. Some issues with the chair and his family, but we should be meeting within the next couple of weeks.
Because that would give us the, the opportunity to run it through our finance. To keep, bring them up to speed as to where it's going or could go.
All right, certainly.
I'm just going to say, was there another question?
Does anybody have any stats on population or anything? That are required? I, I do have no questions, but. That we made ten. The first question I, I have is, does anybody have any stats? You know, so that your finance committee may ask you for stats. That's the other thing I'm thinking of. They may say, what's the population? You know, what, how many people do you think will be coming? That kind of thing. So. You know, if they ask you, I've prepared stats. Because I have to, in any case, for. The, the grant, the formula grant. So I have those stats if you write them. So the offer's on the table.
I, I'm familiar with the relative sizes and stats on the population. I don't have that directly on senior population, which is our relevant group. So I, I, I can obtain that. You have it for North Brookfield, but I'd have to ask.
The dad is not in yet for.
Yeah, okay.
The formula grant site under the town of Ocam.
Yes, we haven't gotten the one for this year and ours is in. I looked at it from last year real quick.
Yes.
It was. I can't remember off the top.
Yeah, it's based on the twenty twenty federal census.
Yeah.
So it's not going to change for ten years.
It won't change here.
And I figure people coming and going will probably stay relatively constant.
I did have our town clerk. She was trying to get some more concrete numbers for me. I think she's still working on that because she's been a little bit with the elections and things like that. So she was trying to get those numbers together for me. I can check in with her tomorrow and see how far she's gone with that, but.
If you need them, I have them.
Okay.
Do you have a sign-in process so you can track attendance at the senior center?
We have the my senior center.
Okay. So that you get good numbers on.
So there is a question that I think might be relevant. So you use my senior center. I know you do.
Yes.
As, as do we.
Yep.
And senior centers can have, in my senior center, you can have satellite. Yeah, satellite operations.
Yep.
So my question was for you, especially because we want to keep Congregate Meals here and the meals on wheels. But so. Officially, we would not have a senior center here. So it would be, would you consider having a. Satellite site so people can check in?
Absolutely. I actually, so one of the things, yeah, one of the things when this first came up that we were, I was thinking about was having. Office hours, if that makes sense, over here between myself and the program and outreach coordinator. So. I just got a, I have an interim. Outreach coordinator. I'm hoping she's going to be permanent in a week. But she is very driven with, she's actually, she came from Spencer.
Yeah.
COA. So she's, she did that for a year and a half. She's very driven to do whatever she needs to do to service seniors in the area. So she has no problem with traveling or anything like that. Neither do I. So that was, it was, that definitely came up in.
Okay.
My thought process was, because I think it, it would be expecting a lot for seniors to drive. From here into North Brookfield. So yeah, I have no problem coming over here.
Yeah, that's really nice. That's really good. And this way there would be one, my senior center would be North Brookfield with a satellite site here.
Yeah.
So we would actually be logging in our satellite site to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. I'm just thinking on the mechanics now.
Yeah.
The other thing too is I noticed that my senior center has a ability to, I can download our database. So you can upload it to yours, which makes the transition very easy. Just, just point of interest for. People that have to deal with it. Nobody else cares frankly. So, okay. The other question I had was, you know, we get phone calls here from senior citizens. So the question we had was how to man the phones. And, you know, even if we could arrange somehow that they called the number here, so there's no change for them. But it gets forwarded to you in North Brookfield for answering. So that would be a consideration as well. Trying to make it kind of seamless to, to people that, you know, that may reach out. They would call.
Depending on your phone system.
I tell. You in North Brookfield, that would be yours. I tell is our phone system.
I, I don't know.
He might, they might.
If that, it has that capacity and.
I'm not sure. We would, we would have to contact.
It might be easier just to put it on the town website with the new phone number to eight, six, seven.
We could do that.
You know, instead of.
As long as they have a computer, we're good. They don't have a computer, we're not good. Well, you would, you would be sending them out notice anyway. If this happened, you would send them out paper notices to all seniors. With the new phone number and everything else that's involved, that they wouldn't have any questions that we're doing. He's doing it work all the time. But anyhow, it's for a point of consideration. It's not a yes or no. We wanted to negotiate, maybe if you could have a welcoming for people from Ocam. So they could get settled in and hear everything that you can offer at the center too.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we can.
We'd certainly be doing outreach.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
And having events.
The, the most popular activities, I saw your, your Tai Chi instructor. I thought you did a wonderful job. Yeah. The biggest, biggest activities are. Functional fitness. And Zumba. We got the Zumba from them anyway to begin with. So they, they're pretty well accustomed to that. Yeah. The Zumba from them? You did? Yes, we did.
Don, you go.
That's where I got it from.
We've actually been trying to find.
A Zumba instructor?
Well, Melanie, so our, what happened was. Our, it started to decline, the number of people that we had coming.
Yeah.
We've actually been, I've been working for a year trying to find a spot to get her to come back in. So. If you guys have people that are wanting to come in, I am definitely.
Oh, yeah.
On board for getting her back in there. Absolutely. Yeah.
Well, that's good to know. Okay. A lot of those are up for further discussion. Oh, okay. Tonight was for, just to get used to them and be financially, you know, where we are at, where you are at. And, and to get a feel for how it could work with you. Just do one more and I'm done. We have an inventory of medical devices. So. You know, just consider that in your plans. You know, should we heave ho it or would you like it? If I'm not mistaken, didn't you send them some already?
I did. I brought some over.
I thought Barbara said that at the last meeting. So we're all set on that too. Well, that we would have to decide what to do with our staff.
That, that was the extra. We have an inventory.
I don't have any more questions.
No more questions?
So just a consideration.
Don, do you have any further questions?
Nope. One of the nicest things that I saw, okay.
We're kind of writing something up.
Is their morning coffee over there. It's, it's a wonderful social visit. And it's, it's every day that they're open.
What I really like to see, and I, I don't live in Brookfield, I live in Ludlow and in fact, I've been the. Building the new senior center. We built, it's a very, very entrance and it's a large than eighteen thousand square foot facility. We built a little coffee shop. So people can come in in the morning and some of the younger seniors who are still working. Can come in, have coffee, interact and leave. And I'd love to have something like that here.
And what time does that open in the morning?
It opens, I believe it. It's either eight or eight thirty.
Okay, a lot too early. Yeah.
And, you know, it's, the whole idea is people can come in and, you know, not spend a lot of time there. Grab a coffee and sit down. There's some tables and. I would love to see something like that here because the key to making senior centers. Successful, in my opinion, is, is getting not just the older seniors in, but the younger ones who are still.
Especially the younger ones.
Yeah, who are still.
Because that's where it's going to be going.
Yeah.
They're the ones that are going to be able to continue it.
Yes. And it's, that can be hard because they're still, they've still got their working lives and, and you got to integrate them in.
Do you send out programs to your seniors? Do with a letter?
Yes, yes.
Every month?
Yes, yep.
And you send them out to all your seniors or?
I mail them and we also place them.
Around the town.
Yep, yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, good. How many do you usually mail out?
We mail out, I'm at. Fifty-three now because we have people that are starting to come in more. So they'll come in and they'll grab one when they come into, when they visit the center. We're working on. Email. There are some seniors out there that would like to have it emailed. There aren't a lot, but we're working on the process of getting. Because the, the problem is with my senior center, they use a, it's only a certain software that'll work with it. So I'm trying to find a workaround because we don't, it's, we're supposed to use Canva with it. But I'm trying to find a workaround around to get it so that I can get the newsletter in there to email it.
Can you do it through your website?
The town website? I don't know. I have to check into that. We do. So I have been. We have the ability, when I remember to send it to her, she will post it on the town website. So it's there as well. And then we're also updating the list of activities on the town website as well. So.
Good. Send an out true outlook as well to contact list.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
It's a good discussion for our first one to see how we're coming along with this.
And you'll be corresponding with us.
We will be corresponding with you and.
Be getting back to you. Probably not this week. I have surgery this, this week. So.
Okay, that's fine.
Should be back next week.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much for all the information.
Mike, if you want to just email it forward to the board or you can email it to Lucy, whoever you would like.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Nice meeting you guys.
Nice to meet you.
I am. Welcome. I'm going to figure out that.
You must have got it.
I, I found it. You can do that. Take care.
Okay, next on the agenda?
Oh, yes. Yes, this is for Tom Hughes, of his emergency management grant that requires a signature. The board. This is the page, Lucy.
Just one signature.
Yeah, one signature.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we sign the FY. Is that twenty-four or twenty-five?
Twenty-four. It's twenty years behind.
Okay, the FY twenty-four EMPG grant application.
Authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And it's for the standard, what we typically every year is twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Okay.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
There you go. Thank you.
I'll perform.
So this is the most updated. Balance on the ARPA. If you look on the last page under allocations, that sixty-five hundred dollars just came out. It's already allocated, but it's going to be transferred over to. Fully expenditure for the library. They just, that was just processed in this warrant. But with that, that doesn't affect the balance. The balance remain in eighteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-three cents.
That's the overall balance.
That's available. Yeah.
After the Vadar.
And with everything. Yep. Because all these allocations are being deducted.
Did the, the handheld?
Yep.
That we put back in?
Yep.
Because we had taken it out, put it.
It's on.
For the radio.
Yep, it's on the third page for nine seventy-three fifty.
Oh, okay. Down the bottom, the motorola. That's what it is. Okay. So our remainder was what?
Eighteen thousand. It's right on the last page. Right there.
Oh, okay.
Eighteen thousand, two ninety-four, sixty-three. I didn't know if there was anything else. Under allocation.
Under allocations that the board. I mean, everything is pretty committed. The only one that I would think that. You know, could be questioned is the dumpster and shred it. I don't know if we, if, if we're gonna keep it, we need a contract by the end of this year with the company. Well, it was, well, it wasn't Board of Health. That was when the former selectman was here as of just a, a process. I don't think that was allocated under Board of Health per se. It was just for shredding documentations. Um, keep it in mind that. Hopefully, the documentation that needs to be shredded has been approved by the state with the uh, restrictions on, you know, how, how, the retention schedule. So I don't know if anyone's done that. I know that that project had started upstairs and it kinda. You know, stopped there, so I don't know if retaining this two thousand for the shredded project. It's something that you guys want to move forward with, seeing that we're. I mean, we can put a, a deposit on a company, but I don't know if it's gonna be enough. And then, you know, is it gonna get actually shredded? I don't know.
Company till we know what's gonna go.
Yeah, we've got to.
So I mean.
Start over with.
Yeah.
Going through what goes into the shredder.
And this may not even be this fiscal year.
Right.
Correct. So I, is, is the shredder for two thousand dollars, the dumpster and shred it? Something that the board would like to put back to the balance or keep for now?
I would rather see it go back to the balance.
I would think it would have to go back.
No, it's just the record retention, process and submitting the paperwork. Um, clearly, we can speak with the other departments, but again, like you said, it's a lot of work and limited personnel and staff.
Green Hollow Cemetery Arch. Have we had any updates as to the?
I thought it was coming pretty soon.
Yes, he did say that he was hoping by sometime end of October or sometime in November at the latest, hopefully before snow.
Before November eleventh even would be nice.
Yeah.
And library roof seems to move it long.
That's been paid actually, so I'm gonna move that to expenditures that just got paid in this warrant.
Yep.
Yep.
Have we heard anything from Mr. Leacock about town hall painting?
I have not.
I know he said fall, but it's.
It's kind of late.
And we're getting into the fall. It's only been in one month, but it's still.
I don't know.
The snow's gonna be coming pretty soon.
The temperature and paint too.
Maybe he has magic paint.
Let's hope not.
Don didn't hear me say that, did you?
Yeah, I did.
So, um, yeah, we can follow up with him.
Well, today's the fifteenth.
Yeah, well, you know, sometimes it's really warm at the beginning of November.
Few years ago, I was at the beach on November eleventh.
That's true.
You, you never know. Down at the Cape, fishing on the boat.
But e- even to fix some of it.
I'll show you photos later.
Even to fix some of the things he needs to fix, he could fix them before.
Yeah, I even let the kids get to school that day. It's so warm.
Actually, Lucy, all we need him to do is sign our contract.
Did we, did we send him one? No, but we can work on that tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll work on that because.
The one that you guys voted on.
One that we voted.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, we have his contract already signed a year ago.
Right.
Well, almost a year ago. And so, but we just haven't had it transferred onto the town contract.
Okay.
We don't need to do that. That's why I was wondering if that had been done yet, so, but.
But most of everything else on here is past. What we voted for that contract form, that standard form. Yeah. So like the archway, that's beyond. It would be pointless.
Leave it in the other day. Yeah.
Okay.
And Lori said she will be working on um. The actuary study, so that should be done soon. Um. So. Do you guys need to vote on the two thousand and two? Please do.
Yeah, we voted to put it in. I'll just vote here to take it out.
Right.
That's on the shredding?
The dumpster and shred it.
What was that, second page?
Last page. What bit?
All right, I make a motion um, to put the two thousand dollars that was voted for dumpster and shred it. Back into the balance. Or the grand total for the carpentry.
Second.
Harper money.
Oh, Eva.
Aye.
Aye. Does the board have any new business?
I do not.
I do. You know, any?
I do.
Thinking we should probably put something together from the Alden Fund to help. His family has three children involved.
As long as we're within keeping of the intent of the Alden Fund, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, it's very, very restrictive because it's.
Is it for general welfare?
Not particularly. It's for niceties for the poor.
It would be nice if they had a little extra money to prepare the house.
I was just, I'm just trying to think of the wording of the original thing that, that gentleman put out.
Let's, let's look into it and.
Cause it was like anything covered by anything. Especially anything having to do with the government and like that was not allowed. So I was just. Going through that because they do have insurance. That was something that wasn't covered. In, in that original document that I recall.
No.
I would say a nicety.
It was not to be used for an offset to.
Of any cost.
The town's department of the four, it wasn't to be used for. It was more. To purchase niceties. For the poor, which could be. You know, pair of boots, jug of whiskey for the town drunk could be.
Well, the example he gave was, oh, if you see so-and-so, you know, he's been in a chair for a long time, doesn't feel too well. I'll give him a cigar. That, a quote from him. So um, that's kind of what he had in mind, something like that.
So the trouble with the Alden Fund is it predates nineteen sixty-four.
That's the problem.
And the grand society with welfare.
It was from nineteen twenty.
Um.
Three.
Nineteen seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yeah.
I thought it was twenty-three, but that's all right.
It's very difficult to.
Every board has struggled, struggles with it. It, they really have.
It, it is up to the discretion of the board. Of selectmen. And that's referenced in it. At their discretion. So. I think there's probably something we should find in the files and to make sure. Cause back then, people didn't have house insurance either.
Yeah.
Those types of things where in today's society, everything is, you got a mortgage, you better have insurance or the bank's gonna be. And the other side of it is. Next time, the next time, the next time. You know, do we set a precedence? Based on a circumstance? I, I understand what you're saying.
You know, I, I, I understand.
Yeah, we, we, we agree.
What have you used it for?
We have used it to. We've used it for seniors. We've used it for um, medical equipment for a couple of people. We used it for one person that. Was going into a rest home, but yet wasn't able to pay off her fuel bill. We did use it for that.
Those are the more traditional. Now, when I was on the board before, we used it. Uh, cause back then, um, we were doing fruit baskets instead of gift certificates and. The board at the time, we got names from the principal of the elementary school. The minister and one of the parish priests where a lot of the Ocam people go to church out of town. Um, to come, come up with a name, a list of names for young families that were struggling. You know, financially. And what we did at Christmas time was um, we did gift certificates for a hundred dollars to. Back then, it was Victory Supermarket. And I forget how many there were, and that was in conjunction with the fruit baskets for everybody over seventy-five. Cause I didn't feel that. The age thing necessarily met the criteria other than. Cause you could theoretically be doing a fruit basket to. You know, a millionaire. You know, just happened to be over age seventy-five, so it fell into a lump sum.
We didn't ask them how much they made when they got that.
But to follow the letter of the. The trust. It's very much written in the last century. You know, over a hundred years ago, and it was written by. Got that mindset at the time in the politics or not so much politics, but government at the time. And how things work. So it's, it's been very difficult to. And then. I realize it seems like there's a lot. In the trust. But. It could go very quickly.
Somewhere we have the document.
Somewhere. There is. I have seen it.
I looked today.
But it was a long time ago, but I, I did see it. I kind of think they don't. I think it was mainly kept for the board of selectmen to, to work with. Cause that's when I would have seen it is way back when.
Well, that could be upstairs.
I, gosh, I hope not.
I would think it.
Cause it was, it was handwritten.
But it was, it was written in cursive.
Yes.
And it had George Alden's signature on it. So. I have a copy somewhere. I looked at home just from the last time on the board I'd made a copy of. But I haven't found it yet, so probably up in the attic.
All right.
But.
We can hold up on this until we figure out if it's legit or not.
Yep.
Just remember, there were two other fires in town recently too.
I thought of that.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And there was one last year.
Yeah, I'm very hilarious.
And hopefully, there'll be no more for a long time. Okay. I, I don't have any.
Business, we have charter agreement in Skyline Drive.
So. Maribel got some, and I spoke with David from KP Law this morning. And we went over the contract. Yeah. I don't know if David has a better understanding of wording in the contract. Versus his first opinion last week. As I had pointed out, that on page seven, and this is what he had quoted. Was the parties acknowledge that this scope of work and charters' cost estimates are preliminary in nature and are subject. To revision based on archaeological findings or other factors identified during final engineering, comma.
Archaeological findings?
So.
Could be the Indians though. It could have been something about that. Yeah.
So I pointed out to David that. It's not preliminary where we're at now. Cause final engineering, comma, means. That's doing their due diligence. On what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, what they have to do. That's their engineering plan. So. And, and then it says including but not limited to changes in route or construction or materials. Or techniques, scope of work mutually agreed upon by the parties. This, in my opinion, and I said it to him, was. This is before they string the first foot of wire. Before they trim the first tree, before. You know? So. It basically came down to. It would probably cost us a lot to drag him in the court. But the other side of it is. To quote you, if it was. Shoe was on the other foot. They probably wouldn't play ball with us.
Yep.
So he had suggested an option of. Taking the total divided by the total number of. Addresses. To come up with a number for those two addresses. And Maribel pointed out to him, well, that scope of work to go from Rutherford Road to Stone Road. Is a bigger scope of work than saying doing Grace's Lane. So I was like, there should be some type of penalty clause. You know, whether that's a, you know, those two addresses divided by the total amount. Or into the total amount. Plus ten percent. Cause what would have, what part of the project? You know, there was no engineering breakdown as the cost of each segment. You know, that was, that I know of that was discussed. I mean, it predates me, but. So I had suggested to David that we'll talk tonight. And. That we should probably send them a registered letter saying, hey, look. We feel you are in violation of the contract. Because this was your due diligence and your engineering. Before. And see what they come back with.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, they're not gonna. Only up two hundred and fifty-four, fifty thousand more dollars. Cause the way I read the letter they sent to Lucy was. It would require. Another two hundred and fifty thousand on top of what's already there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the idea of adding two addresses and calling it even. And then writing them a check for ninety-six thousand, five hundred for the second payment. To me is absurd because. The Croc and I road address or whatever that they put down, there's gonna be houses constructed on that road. Going forward.
Mm-hmm.
So they're gonna end up putting that in anyways for those new houses. Not at our cost, but. Just to tie in those houses.
Yeah.
I would think if those people want. You know, where the builder. Wants to put cable in those houses. Why should we? Get involved in it. And the other one is off of Robinson, which is, I, I believe it's just a private drive going down. So. What they would be getting out of. And what they would be doing don't equate at all, I don't think.
Yeah.
So. Your thoughts on it?
I, I agree with you sending the letter and. Back onto them.
See what sticks.
Yeah.
Because the way I just read that, I don't know. I got it if you wanna read it, see if you read it the same way, but. This is what David's quoting is. This is what David's quoting is this paragraph. And I read that as all preliminary work. And it's gonna be a game of chicken. See who's willing to.
I was just gonna say really quickly, we made it very clear. The time sensitivity due to the ARPA funds.
Yep.
Because if we're, if it's, there's gonna be a price reduction of any store. Then we need to know that. Yesterday, so those funds can be allocated elsewhere.
To something else. So.
Okay.
I mean, obviously. They're not gonna budge as far as spending that kind of money to go up.
No.
And. They. Like we've talked about before and I mentioned before. National Grid already dropped the poles off to, to go up through the woods. So they evidently. Had a head button thing with National Grid, National Grid said. Most likely. Oh yeah, that's fine, but you're gonna pay this. For us to do this. And that's corporate.
Yeah.
Negotiations that had nothing to do with us.
Yeah.
So it. It comes full circle around to Charter didn't do. Their engineering and they didn't do their due diligence. And they were playing Ocam for a bunch of rubes.
On top of sending a letter, it was um. I don't know if there's any discussion of if there is a meeting ever to be held because Charter doesn't want. To be in a public meeting, typically they had asked to speak with the chair or a board member. Um, David from KP Log did suggest. You know, having one board member designated or attend a, a possible future meeting to kind of try to. Figure out a plan, um, if that's something that the board would want to do, and if so, maybe which member.
Said it was allowed, but I kind of pushed back. That. I didn't feel comfortable with that.
They, they're not gonna wanna do an open meeting. And, and I know that in.
On record is a rep, it'll be their reputation on the record.
In cer- certain circumstances, I know that, you know, there's been that. One board member and then reports back, kind of take the call or take the meet in, so. Just something for you guys to think about that if it gets to that point. Who would want?
But it would, it would be very difficult for the one board member. To get into that kind of discussion or negotiation. Not knowing. Or having the authority to speak for the other two.
Exactly.
And then. Come back to and, and have the other two go, well, no. Well, no, and then.
Yeah, there would be.
So the negotiation would be just dragged on, it would be.
Would be difficult.
It would be kind of.
Be like Henry Kissinger going back and forth to Paris for.
I think it would be one of those like, okay, here's a phone call scheduled or the meeting on a Monday in, in preparation already having. A work session probably set for Wednesday to discuss it with the full board and. You know, a little choppy. I just don't know if they're willing or would budge on meeting in a public meeting. Because did they ever come before the board? Before?
No.
So these contracts were presented when they were signed in behalf of the committee that did a lot of the work. Through council being involved and reviewing it, so there was a lot of that back and forth, but Charter never be. Came before a board at a public meeting.
Is if we.
That's true.
Well, that's. That may be the way to go if we invite them in. Yeah. Cause then we, the three of us would be here, we'd be able to say, okay, hey, look. This is the way we read it, you read it differently. We read it as. You didn't do your due diligence and that's shame on you, not us.
Would that be wise to have? Representations at the executive session or just?
Oh yes.
For sure, cause I'm, I'm sure they're not coming if they do agree to come.
Lawyer to lawyer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we should. Contact David tomorrow and suggest. Whether he comes or. I don't know, I think it would rather Jared come, but.
He could phone in too.
That's true, I mean, we, we're assuming, we've got the Zoom, so we could use it that way.
Yep.
Sure. You could all go on Zoom.
Yeah.
I did like Mike from the firm.
Yeah.
He pretty sharp.
Yeah.
But he doesn't do this kind of stuff.
Not his, uh, special hook.
But I think he'd probably be pretty good at it in this case, you know, to.
He was great.
You really need to, you really need a bulldog on this.
Yeah.
To drive home the fact that. You did not do. And you let us to believe that you did, but you didn't, and that's not our fault.
That's right.
Because if you had needed another hundred thousand or another. That's something that you should have presented in your, in your contract.
Yep.
So if whoever you sent out was. You know, afraid to go and walk up. That leg of three poles or four poles or whatever it is through the woods. Um, that's on them, that's not on us.
No.
No. You know, if they're afraid of going in the woods or. And I bet you that's probably what it was, I don't.
They could very well be, or they need to cut trees down where they could, so they could put something else up there. It is thickly settled with trees.
No, and I, my understanding is there is. Grid says they do have to go up through there and maintain that. That circuit.
Yeah.
Cause people live up there.
Right.
And those poles going up there put in a. Nineteen twenties, thirties. Well, that's on there, they're just. National Grid just, you know, that has to go through their budget process.
We're gonna have to check how much money we have in our legal fund. Before the end of the year too. If we're gonna have our lawyer present at the same time as the other lawyers there.
Now, can we use ARPA for that if it's, if we spend it out of that first? Maybe we should earmark what we have left.
Or legal expenses would be the only thing.
And, and pay. These expenses as they come up for this, cause otherwise if something else comes up. We're gonna be depleted.
Yeah.
Going forward.
And you're in yourself.
And then just as they come in, pay it out of. Out of that, instead of out of the, the budgeted. And that'll leave.
How much?
I have no idea. Maybe we should ask.
I was just gonna say, we ask him approximately. What would it cost?
Yeah.
He knows. It's not his first rodeo, he's done this before.
Because if we gotta earmark the money anyways. Nobody else has beat, beat the door down for the remainder. Of this is broke, that's broke, we need this, we need that, so.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think it should be our intent to, to do that, it should be. But I don't think we should roll over and take it either.
No.
No. On the, uh, the other front, Skyline. I'm gonna let Maribel start you.
Another legal expense.
Yeah.
I'm so Sharon from Town Council. Uh, got a response from the resident on Skyline Drive. In regards to the Board of Selectmen's, uh, offer of the twelve hundred dollars. For legal expenses for their attorney. And the response read as follow. Hello, Sharon, the amount offered may or may not cover the cost of my attorney fees. I would feel more comfortable with confirmation. With confirmation attorney fees would just be covered completely. I will not be paying for any attorney fees associated with this. After speaking about this with my attorney, we feel like twenty-five hundred would be a better guess. But still may or may not get this done. If you agree to the figure though. And we do not have this wrapped up, the process would need to come to a stop and attorney fees would still need to be paid. By your client, meaning the town. And to proceed any further, your client will need. To still pay, to agree to pay the rest of the, um, the rest of the fees to get this across the finish line. On the flip side, if the, if it's less, then of course your client wouldn't spend that much. Thanks, have a gr- a great day. So. Her, her, um, email said, Mayor Bell, please see response, uh, please let me know if the town is. Willing to amend to twenty-five hundred dollars. If it needs additional work by his attorneys, he will not finalize the easement. Also note that the town will be required to pay regardless of whether the parties reach an agreement or not.
So there.
So. The town legally does not have a dog in the hunt whatsoever. Any hasn't. Said that. I will give the town the easement. So to, to spend twelve hundred or twenty-five hundred. And not knowing. You know, whether he agrees with the general premises of all this. So to go forward and, you know, do this, do that, whatever, and then at the last minute he goes, you know, I don't wanna do that. So. With this that was voted. Uh, I'm kind of whether it even applies. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. The six F that was voted was repealed. And I think it ties into six D in the, the new Mass General laws.
Yeah.
But that's more in regards to. Repairs. Maintenance of the roadway, et cetera. Which we're under no obligation whatsoever to do. So if the drainage plugs up. Don't call us. Type of thing.
Can we take the roadways by eminent domain and leave the easement off?
You. Probably could, we can ask, but. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that. She said it's definitely an option you can explore, it's just gonna be clearly. You're trying to avoid any litigation and, and stuff like that, you wanna do it the easy way or the smoother way, um.
But.
But she did state that if that did happen, I have to find the email. Not be aligned that the. Resident would probably sue, it would be dragged through court.
So you're gonna sue.
That he wouldn't obtain probably anything at the end of the day, but just the cost, litigation itself.
Well.
I don't know, this is just her overall.
Yeah.
You know.
Seems property, if it backs up, backs up onto his property.
But if we take the roads by eminent domain.
Then it's up to us.
And now the town is dumping water. On his property through this underground pipe. So now he has an avenue. To get. Somebody to go after, where if we don't. Take the roads by eminent domain or vote to take the roads. He has nothing to come after the town for. If the beavers go up the pipe and plug that pipe and it blows the cast, catch basin lids off into his front yard and floods out his basement. That's on him. Where if we accept the roads. One way or the other, before getting that easement. That we own. Legally, we, we could own the damage to his property. Cause he's at the bottom of the rung. Where if we just plow the roads and go.
Now, did they have to be? If I, I can't recall, um. Was there something in question of whether they were? Public ways and that was the way to plow them or just plow them no matter what, right?
No, we, we adopted the law statement.
Okay.
In sixty-three, nineteen sixty-three, for, for down on Lake Dean.
Mm-hmm, sure.
The council also said if you. Have other roads. That you're plowing. You can't stop plowing this one.
Right, so if this didn't exist down here. We would have never had to.
We wouldn't have this, yeah.
But it may have jumped the gun. When we agreed to do, when Sonny said he wasn't gonna do it anymore. Probably had a legal right. Not to let him off the hook. As far as the. As far as the, uh. As far as the development.
You weren't on board. That's exactly what I said. Three years ago. This is not our issue.
Yeah.
But the homeowners sue him.
That's where it should have gone. And. The bankruptcy of Ocam Sand and Gravel. Should have never dragged. The former owner of that into any of this.
Right.
It. It should have just been Sonny Como.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Be done with it.
But. Because he said he wasn't gonna plow it. Town should have never gotten involved, go ahead, don't plow it, it's got nothing to do with us. Is really what should have been said at the time. And I, I mean, I wasn't on the board, I don't know what happened.
It was said at the time and the issue came in about public safety.
Yeah.
That's how we ended up. Getting to where we were. If somebody's having a heart attack at the end of that street and it's not plowed. What do we do?
No, and I understand that, if somebody's house catches fire.
Yeah. And they're paying taxes. And not getting. Lower discount because.
Right, that was the thing was that they all pay taxes.
But it doesn't. All that aside, it doesn't absolve. That this whole. Housing development went through the planning board process. And. Because of bankruptcy, et cetera. And all that went on. It had nothing to do. With the town.
Oh yeah, yeah.
The town should be just going like this. Hey, we're waiting. For you, whoever, to tell us that it's ready to be accepted.
We can't separate the two roads from each other. That would make. Um, schoolhouse. A dead end. If we. Far off that.
That's exactly.
Well, we couldn't do it anyways, we don't own it.
It's exactly what council said. So we have another development that. Gets built and we don't accept those roads, guess what?
Hmm.
We're gonna do that one too.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, to a point. Where it's an approved project through the planning board. And if everything goes correctly. You don't need to plow it. You know, it would just be okay, are you coming to town meeting? And planning board signs off and.
Right.
We accepted a town meeting.
Right.
If it, if there's an issue with it. We wait till the contractor or the developer fixes the issue.
Right.
Exactly. Before we get involved, it's, it's not gonna be a. If they go bankrupt. Exactly, it's not automatic. But I think this would have been resolved. If. In its hindsight, it's twenty twenty, you know, it's. If we hadn't plowed the roads. There would have been a lot more pressure to. Within that. Group of residents to pay what's going on, cause I guarantee you most of them have no clue.
No. No.
They're they're doing their own thing and.
And I wonder if Mr. Como really wouldn't have done it. You know what I mean? I know that that wasn't a gamble, cause clearly residents' lives are.
Wouldn't have taken a bet against.
No, I wouldn't either, but he had a legal obligation.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, the residents could have ganged up on him, taken him to court.
Yeah.
And. That's what should have happened. They should have gone after him for not plowing. But I mean, it's hindsight, we we are where we are with it right now, so. But unless. The resident wants to. Give us an affirmative that. He will accept and sign off on the easement, I don't think we should do anything else. Because he hasn't said, you know, is he gonna? Put up a fuss and say, no, I'm not doing this.
Mm-hmm.
After the money's spent.
Yeah, we want a guarantee from him that he's gonna accept.
And it doesn't sound like he's willing to do that.
And if he doesn't, and we need to get down there and get through there, he.
So a guarantee.
Very difficult.
Yeah, well, there there would be no going down there, is what I'm getting at. If he does not sign over that easement to the town. We will not go down there if the beavers plug up that pipe or.
Right.
Under any circumstance.
Or if the house catches on fire.
Well, that's a different thing.
We get, well, it was, it's. Uh, it's a fire pond.
Yeah, that's true.
He's taking the, he's taking the chance.
Forgot about that, you know.
It's a fire pond.
But I mean, we're under no obligation to clean that pond or nothing.
So do you want me to communicate with council that? The town wants a guarantee and do you guys have a dollar cap? To go back, because again, she said, you know, they said twenty-five would be a better guess, but not a guaranteed guess.
And we often.
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
Which is under the allocations of the um, in ARPA.
One oh one.
Well, I mean, you're more versed on. Stamps, recording fees and all that stuff. Is it more than twelve hundred dollars or something like that? Does he want a survey for?
He just.
That's thirty-five hundred dollars.
That's where it could come in.
Again, so the, so it's all for attorney fees though. Not. You know, not additional cost, so that wouldn't, to me, wouldn't be an attorney fee, but again.
I think we should tell Sherin, we want. A written guarantee that. He will sign off on the easement before we agree to.
That's what I was gonna say.
Any more. Money in the legal fee, because if it's just gonna spend a bunch of money. With his attorney and then he's gonna go at the last minute, nah.
Right.
We're, we just need to walk away.
Right.
And.
Yeah.
Leave it at that, cause it, there, there is no. Bonus on us to, we've really done, the town has done way more than it ever should in any of this.
So if there's a confirmation hypothetically that they, he agrees to, for sure, to sign it over, again. Kinda whatever the a- attorney fees are. I mean, it shouldn't be.
I I would not, no.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right.
Put a number down, stick to the number.
Right, but that's what I'm saying to you guys, what would you, what would you think? Cause they're saying we'll start at twenty-five, it might be less, but it can be more. And if it's more, he made it very clear that he is not gonna pay anything towards his attorney fees.
Split the difference between the thirteen hundred dollar difference. So nineteen hundred fifty.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, like I say, the other side of this, I I would like. Some kind of affirmative statement out of him.
I was gonna say that, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Fifty with a guaranteed statement that he's.
Yeah, also not the twelve, not the twenty-five, nineteen fifty.
Because he hasn't. He either doesn't have the.
He hasn't shown any goodwill on our end. Who else, we're the ones that keep going and going and going. He's just saying no.
Right.
I mean, again. Just based on his correspondence on the. That's a better guess. I will not pay anything.
I just gave, I just gave you my best guess.
I like it. I will let her know so she can communicate this.
I mean, frankly, I'm ready to. Right now.
I am.
Not do another thing about it.
I am too, but.
Um, we, Mary Bell asked Sherin if. Mr. Ramadillo was free and clear with what he's already signed, he said yes. And. Same for Como.
They would have to sign waivers. But if they're. Uh, damage waivers, I think she said.
Yeah.
But if if the town, if the town isn't going to accept the roads for whatever reason, then they don't have to do that.
But they've already signed over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whatever interest they had.
Yeah.
Has already been gone through.
Yeah.
So theoretically, Mr. Ramadillo, yeah, Como are. Free and clear.
Yeah.
Of any responsibility for those roads.
Exactly.
So at this point. You know, we can be like. Plow the snow one time at the end of the storm and sand the road. You know, we're not gonna plow it ten times.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we'll, we'll plow it at the end of the storm and. Or whatever the interval is equivalent to down here.
Yeah, yeah.
And. It's last on the list.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Type of thing.
Do we need a new um. A motion to amend the twelve hundred to nineteen fifty, please? From the ARPA.
So moved.
Do we, do we even want? To do that yet, or do we wanna have?
She needs something solid to go back to the attorney.
Number wise.
Number wise, number wise.
Do we wanna go to Sherin first and say, look? We need confirmation.
It's all part of what she's.
From him that. He's going to go forward with this in good faith and not.
Or maybe leave it out.
Minute.
Wouldn't leave it up.
Mm-hmm, that's what I've been saying.
That in with the guarantee that makes talking.
Right.
Because if we're gonna go through all this.
We'll be here every week.
Spend a bunch of money and.
No.
He's gonna wet his finger and stick it up, see which way the wind's blowing.
Yeah.
Um, and then.
For nineteen fifty.
I don't, I honestly don't think he even understands what this is.
I don't think he does either.
Because.
This is not a big deal.
It's already in the ground, it's like, okay, you bought this house for seven hundred and some odd thousand dollars. Did you not look at your plot plan when you bought it? Or did you not read the legal description, did you not?
Obviously, he didn't. He think, he doesn't know that certain easement there.
Well, sup- supposedly, it's not on the deed, correct?
Somehow.
How did that?
Somehow it got missed.
It was not on.
So he feels none of it is his fault. That he did everything he was supposed to do when he purchased it.
But you would have thought when he bought the property and he, okay, here's my corner pen, here's the the north pen, here's the. East and.
Mm-hmm.
West pen. Well, there's a big pipe coming out of.
Mm-hmm.
That didn't trigger any alarms in his. You know, buying a property.
And then the subdivision layout, it's clear.
Yes.
And it's in there.
Absolutely, yeah.
So what do the title company look at?
That's what I'm wondering, it it's it's way back that far that they didn't look at it and it got missed.
Yeah.
And. He got what he thought was. He didn't know anything about it, so he's, that's why he's sticking back saying, hey. This is what I bought and this is what I'm getting and you're not taking anything.
Which is.
Sewers title company.
So which is.
Exactly, that's what I.
Which is why I say. I'm at the point, if if this is where he's at, like Lucy says. Town should walk away. And not get invested any further into it. Cause. There's only one outcome.
Mm-hmm.
For the town of Oakham. And if he's not in agreement with that. Then, you know, we just say, okay, see you later.
So give him the nineteen fifty with a concrete or just say, will he be?
No, 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 I don't care what he wants to be.
Mm-hmm.
The concrete agreement that he's gonna accept.
But still offering just the nineteen fifty for. Financial, okay.
But the big part of that is.
I think that will.
He has to state he will accept the easement.
Right.
Right, I think the number being below what he said is probably gonna be instantly no. That would be my.
A problem.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah.
It's not, I want and we give.
I mean.
Yeah, okay.
Who's his attorney? I don't know. Could be his wife's brother, and they're gonna kick back the difference. I'm half joking, but.
Yeah, I know.
They are lawyers. Stranger things happen.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
No, 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 I.
Yeah, I like.
I second Dawn's motion for.
The nineteen fifty with a agreement. The confirmation.
Council tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
So going forward, depending on how this works out, we will have to instruct, instruct the highway department.
Hmm.
That you will not go down there. For any road maintenance.
Yeah, no.
Whatsoever.
No.
Snow and ice only.
That's it.
No. Hot holes, no cut and brush, no cleaning out culvert pipes, no, nothing.
No.
No cleaning of the sedimentation pond?
No, nope.
Okay.
Not until we have the legal authority.
Cause I get called in the summer for that because of the mosquitoes.
No.
Yeah, but that's, once again.
Yeah.
You're out in the country and they're everywhere and it's not.
But they gather on the pond. And the pond is pretty stagnant because of the beavers.